Good evening, it's 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Education to order. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the June 12th Business Meeting of the Board of Education. Because it's an exciting event that happened on Saturday, we are going to add recognition to the agenda if I could have a motion to do so.
Yep, I can make the motion to add student recognition to the today's agenda.
There's second?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so we will make that the next item in business. Dr. Fieser?
Thank you. So normally, I'm the one who gets up and kind of pays tribute, but I got to tell you, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, so I'm going to ask Garrett Walker and Anthony Vitale and Max Berkowitz. I think you all know, Garrett is the coach of the foreign high baseball team. Anthony is the athletic director and Max is the principal. And let them tell the story of this amazing, amazing team. So.
All I have to say is, I don't know if you know everything about what happened, but state championship is phenomenal. We're very proud of that. Proud of the character of these young men, but they started the season at 1-11. One win, 11 losses. Most teams probably would give up, and they did not. They had confidence in themselves. Coach Walker, obviously, and the rest of the coaches did an amazing job inspiring and motivating them. They never gave up, and they made the state tournament with a record of 7-13. That, in and of itself, people would be like, okay, we're satisfied. Were you satisfied?
No, that was actually something we spoke about.
Were you satisfied? Obviously not. I could talk so much about this. I'm so pumped up about this, I have to tell you. I've never seen anything like this. I've been following high school sports since I was a little boy. My dad used to bring me to all the Harding High School games because he worked at Harding High School, and I'll tell you, I've never seen or heard of anything like this in high school sports. I'm so proud of the way they handle themselves, so proud of our coach. I'm just, I'm amazed. And I keep tweeting out things like, I'm still reeling, I can't get over this. But I just want to say, all of my compliments really go to the team, but especially Coach Walker, to keep the team together after a 1-11 start, to believe in yourself, to have such confidence, and stay together as a team, it's really a testament to your character. So, thank you very much.
As athletic director, I have to say, all the years I've been around high school sports, again, I've never seen anything like that either. A lot of times in the morning, Coach Walker will come in, you know, talk about what's going on, and they were struggling. I mean, the baseball team was, April was a tough month for them, and, you know, looking back now, they easily could have packed it in early May. And, you know, season ends May 19th, and, you know, pack up, graduate, and then go on their ways to college. But somehow, they still went to practice every day, still worked hard every day. You know, a lot of times in athletics, you say that the expression is not the final destination, it's the journey. They had an unbelievable journey. I mean, the stuff that they went through, and then to be a #32 seed and upset the #1 seed, and the next four games still upset teams. It's just, it's amazing. And I thought Friday, or Saturday night after the game, you know, looking and watching Channel 8 News and WVIT, all the stations, you know, J.T. Lanis, I mean, I think said, one of the best, I was the best columnist I've read out of all the, you know, comments our players made. He said, "We were fighting not to be the worst team in foreign high school history," and then we became one of the best. And I think that sums it up. Great, great quote. So I give him a lot of credit, and I have to give Coach Walker, you know, big kudos, what he's done.
Thanks, Coach, since you guys took all the good stuff to talk about. Yeah, it was a, not a very fun start. You know, coming into this season, we had a lot of upperclassmen, but a lot of new, first-time varsity players. It took us a little bit to get our feet wet, but, you know, everyone's praising me for keeping the kids together, and I really can't take the credit for that. I had 10 seniors. These gentlemen you see over here, some of them are not here, but they made my job easy. They stuck together. They had been playing for each other since they were seven, so they deserved most of the credit. I had the easy job of just doing the X's and O's. They kept the camaraderie, they kept the morale, they decided what was going to happen and what transpired was, you know, history. So I'd like to just quickly introduce my guys here. Cody Hennequin, Nick Hartley, Anthony Turles, John Ligtai, Angelo Simonelli, J.T. Lanis, and Mike Leeson. They deserved the credit.
So we see your medals, but we also have certificates, and what we'd like to do is, with your help, is to give each of you a certificate, and then if you would go around and shake everybody's hands, because I know they would love to shake the hands of the winning, winning, winning team. So, wait a minute.
Okay.
So.
If you want to just give them out, we'll start.
Okay, all right. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Nice job. Congratulations. Nice job. Congratulations. Great 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 job. Congratulations.
Okay, so now we move on to the rest of our meeting. You guys are welcome to stay, but if you feel you want to go, you may. We're going to do public comment now, and then we have some other reporting to do. It's up to you.
And we have some of your, you can congratulate the foreign, you can congratulate the foreign students whose artwork we purchased.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations to you guys. Is there anybody here tonight who wanted to make public comment before the board? Okay, we'll forego the public comments statement then, move on to the chair's report. So, it's a busy time of year, the end of the school year, and I want to thank the board members for taking the time to attend many of the year-end activities. Closing exercises have commenced with the Academy's Inspiring Ceremony on Thursday, and we had the middle school moving up ceremonies Friday and this evening, just part of the board meeting. Harborside had their moving up ceremony. So on behalf of the board, I just would like to say, congratulations to staff and students for what I think was a great school year. It's a lot of fun to celebrate the achievements of our students at the end of the year. It's something that gives me great pride, and I think, I expect that it gives the other board members pride as well. So, job well done, thank you. Are there any liaison reports this evening? This, Dr. Gregory?
Everybody who was not at the Milford Education Foundation Thank You Breakfast received a copy of their newsletter, and I hope you enjoy it, and thank you.
Any other liaison reports?
No, our meeting's Thursday.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Glennon, and our first item under the superintendent's report is actually to highlight high school art students from both foreign and law. So if I might, I would just like to kind of get a little background, and then we're going to see, I don't know if you know, but each of the pieces are displayed here up on the, the overhead, not overhead, the markboard, sorry about that. And then, but I want to talk a little bit about why it's so important that these pieces are here, and why it's so important that the students, the artists themselves are here. Each spring, the employees and visitors to Parsons absolutely love when the art show arrives. When we begin with the elementary, as you all know, followed by the middle, and culminating in the high school. When it's over, and the artwork is taken down, when I say to you that the people who work here, you just sort of have this period of mourning almost, because the walls just become so bare, it's just in stark contrast to what had been up for, actually, months. Every year, the pieces created by our students generate discussion among staff and community. You know, DMV is here, so you have people walking in, people paying taxes, et cetera. You can hear people talking in the hallways, strangers to strangers, strangers to staff members, you know, making statements like, "This is really, this is really middle school? High school kids did this? Wow, did you see this? Look at this." And they're pointing out various pieces. You know, somebody commenting, you know, "We have such talented kids here, I had no idea." Over the years, the pieces being displayed have just been phenomenal, and the talent that our students possess is just, is incredible. So, when I came in, in 2011, the spring of 2011, and I was here less than one month, and the art, the senior, the art show, actually, they had everything then, believe it or not, elementary, middle, and high. It was, it was like Macy's the day after Thanksgiving, walking through the halls, I can remember that. But just being astounded at the art and thinking, we need to start collecting art from our students that could become part of a permanent collection. It was something that was done in my last district. It was already there when I went into the district, and I was so blown over when I went in for my interview, and the walls were just covered with student artwork. And so, I went to the board at that time and asked them, you know, would they support us purchasing artwork each year from students at the high school, pieces that would become part of the permanent collection, and receive support for that. So at this point, we select two pieces from foreign, two pieces from law. They are seniors at both schools that are the artists, and we then, we will be giving each student tonight an honorarium for their piece, and what we do is we take the pieces, we mount them, and have them framed, and then they become part of a permanent collection. And if you've ever been into the superintendent's office, you will see, the walls now are lined with pieces of, it's all student work. And eventually, how wonderful would it be to be able to start having a wall out in the corridor where we literally could start to then display student artwork. So, with that, I want you to know that we're recognizing four students tonight. Before I introduce them, their art teachers are here. Rachel Murphy is here, Megan Hudson, Chip Jukowski?
Yeah, like the composer.
Okay. They're in attendance, and of course, Mr. Berkowitz is here. And again, two students from foreign and two students from law, and we are going to begin with the foreign students. And we have Kelly Perlia and Calvin Foreman, and I think Kelly's, yours is the first piece, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, Megan and, well, and this was your student, is that correct?
Kelly is my student, correct.
And Kelly, would you stand up, and would you be willing to speak to the board about your piece? And the reason I say that is, quite honestly, I can't speak for every board member, but I suspect that you know 100 times more about art than almost everyone sitting here at the table. And so, we would like to hear about it, what it took to create this magnificent photograph of downtown Milford.
Yeah.
It was wide.
You know, they're all excited about the award until I find out they have to present something.
I'm trying to stand.
You're perfect.
Okay. So, this image was created in my AP Studio Art class. In this class, the students have the option to create their work in either, in like any media of their choice. I decided to create my portfolio using digital photography. Photography is a love of mine because, as a photographer, I can capture pictures of landscapes that are unique and breathtaking. My image journey through downtown is from the concentration section of my portfolio. The concentration section of my portfolio consists of 12 original pieces that are grounded in a common theme. My theme was focused on capturing the beautiful landscapes and sea scapes of Milford. I tried to capture the traditional New England church and the white architecture and the nature around the duck pond, and I think I was pretty successful with that. This image captures a beautiful coastal scene in a part of Milford's culture where many of us have fond memories. I hope you enjoy my photograph, and thank you for honoring me with this award.
To the school next year.
Uh, PCE's University.
And what is your major going to be?
Business.
Business, okay. And will you pursue art at all?
Yeah, one of my nerd photography.
Okay, okay, well, that's wonderful, and congratulations, and we're thrilled to have this piece, thrilled. So this is the original over here, and that's the piece that will be framed. Calvin? So Calvin did a piece called Colored Portraits, and his teacher is, again, Mr. Jukowski. So can you speak to your piece, Calvin?
Sure. So it's a, it's a print, it's a silkscreen print, which means that you take a sort of plastic sheet with a sort of sticky side, and you cut out each individual piece, each individual black piece on there is cut out with an X-acto knife. So I sketched the whole portrait first, and then redid it on the, or I cut it all out on the plastic sheet, I put it down on a silkscreen, and printed it through with ink. Took me about a month to cut out the entire thing. Portraits are my sort of favorite thing to do. It's usually in pencil, but. I chose this specific Van Gogh portrait because I felt like Van Gogh, or at least what I know of him, I sort of respect him as an artist because he started from sort of nothing. He was very poor. Most of what he, what he painted was either his own, you know, his own shoes, or himself, because he didn't, you know, there weren't photographs back then, it was sort of a lot less to paint that was sitting still. So, that, and I kind of sort of see a lot of character through this one, this one portrait. This is one of his more famous Man in Fire portraits, there's a lot more behind that, but. So I printed out a lot more than is here. A lot of them come out, look kind of squatchy, so maybe around 20 of these are maybe 15 were printed, that, these are just some of the four best. And then, you know, I went over with a light watercolor, with a, on a different color with each one, and I sort of put it into a, you know, put them together, I guess, and that's, that's sort of, that's it.
Very nice.
Calvin, your plans for next year?
Two years of pistonic, and then...
And then, and then what do you pursue, do you think you're going to pursue as your major?
Business and finance.
Business and finance, and so will you do anything with your art?
Definitely, definitely.
Okay, okay, that's good to hear. That's terrific. And if there's any questions that the board members may have, feel free to ask our artists here. So then we have a piece called The Art of Music, and it's Simone Fletcher, and...
It's right there.
You want to come up, Simone?
Yeah.
And Ms. Murphy, were you her teacher?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Both girls are my students, my AP students.
I'm going to go AP Studio Art, that's...
You have to speak up a little louder.
Yeah, sorry. So, this is my piece. The assignment that Ms. Murphy gave me was, it was for the class, and she said that make something with a different background than you usually do, because all of mine have been in canvas in the background or illustration board, and so she wanted an alternative background. And so I was going around, I knew I wanted to do a collage of some sort in the background and paint over it, and I was digging around for like, if I wanted to do a magazine, or just like scraps of photos I had, and then I came across my old regionals music from the Southern Regionals Orchestra. And then I thought, wow, I have these two great passions in art and in music, and I can combine them for this one piece. Because regional, me practicing for regionals, because you have to do an audition piece, and I worked all summer for my, for my audition, and I got accepted. And then I went and I got the two pieces that we were performing, which were way above my skill. Like, I had to work really, really hard to go and get it to be the way that would be acceptable to be in an orchestra and not mess up, and, you know, to, because I'm in the viola section, which is like, who even knows what a viola is? So, I really want to like, like push that, make sure everything sounds really, really good in the viola section, so everything else can sound really good. And I worked really hard, I worked like four hours on weekends to practice this and to get it up to be the way I wanted to do it, and I wanted to express that kind of, you know, passion in my, the face of the girl who's playing, you know, the kind of how I was feeling, because it was a struggle to get there. But once I sat down in the orchestra and I was, and I played and I performed, it was just, it came together so nicely, and then, it was awesome. It was really, really good. I wanted to hit another point, but I forgot.
You were talking about the pieces of music that you selected for the background?
Yes. So, the, we got photocopies, because we can't use the actual music, and so I had like three different copies, and I ended up just cutting them up, and the one in the back is a Holtz piece called Sweet in E-flat. And that one was, both pieces were beautiful, and the one, the one that makes up her dress is a Brahms piece, and Brahms pieces are just like, they're massive. And this wasn't a, like a remake of it, like it was a Brahms piece, and it was, it was awful practice, but it was a gorgeous piece once it came together. And so like, these are two of the pieces that made me as a musician, and I know I'm talking a lot about music, even though this is an art piece, but those are my two big passions, and I combined them. And so it's ironic that you would pick that one for the permanent collection, because that's really like, you know, the arts, it's, sorry. Oh, thank you for the award.
What are you doing next year?
I'm going to Albertus Magnus to do art therapy. So I am going to be continuing my art, I'm going to do art and healing in one thing.
Okay, that's great, that's great. And then our last piece is Jessica Quebas?
Quebas.
Quebas, okay. Walnut Beach Sunset?
Yes. This piece came from my concentration in AP Studio Art. We picked a theme, and you made 12 pieces relating to that theme. My theme was memories through sunsets. This one came from a memory, I was having a bad day, and I decided to run my bike down to Walnut. So you get a better view of the sunset, it's why I looked, you couldn't really see it that well. And my intentions were to create a feeling of tranquility and clarity, because that's what I was feeling after viewing the sunset, I was more relaxed, my bad day went to a great one. And that's what I tried to do. See, my whole concentration was all just sunsets.
So can you talk about what kind of medium it is?
It is acrylic on canvas, that's my favorite. I don't really like to work with any other, I find them difficult. I, I tried oil, it just takes so long to dry, but it blends a lot better than acrylic does, but I always try with acrylic. Any questions?
What are you doing when you graduate?
I'm moving down to Virginia, and I'm going to Virginia Commonwealth University. I'm majoring in special education, but I might change my mind, because I really do love art. I was considering art therapy like Simone, but I was, I'm still on a F, but I hope to continue it as a hobby.
Certificates for each of you, but before we give those, do any of the teachers want to comment at all?
I will. I just want to say how proud I am of these girls. AP Studio Art is a bear of a course. The students have to put together a body of 24 pieces of their best artwork over the course of nine months, and it's a very short time limit as an artist to put the work together. And, and these girls persevered, and they really gave so much of themselves to the course, and I'm just so proud of them. I'm overwhelmed with joy for them, and I cannot wait to hear what happens in their future, because I know they're going to do great things. So thank you very much for awarding them tonight.
Chip? You don't have to, just, just give you an opportunity.
Three AP students in all of it, but Calvin was Art for Seniors, that's a basic entry level art class, and a lot of people haven't taken art for three years since middle school, and then they take this class. And I've got to give them credit, you know, that three AP students and basic art.
So, AP Studio came into the art department five years ago, and just, I know Rachel and I would like to thank the board and Dr. Fieser for allowing us to bring AP into the classes that we offer in the art department, because it has really restructured our art department. It has allowed us to include the photography, it's allowed us to include a lot of advanced courses that we wouldn't have before, and over the past years of doing a purchase award, which is, the work that the kids do is absolutely amazing, and if it wasn't for the support of the board, we wouldn't be able to do this. So thank you very much.
So, we're going to ask each of you to come up, of our students, and I'm going to give you this, and don't drop the envelope out, because that's the honorarium. Calvin, and then will you go and shake the hands of the doctors?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations, good luck. Nice work.
As I mentioned, terrific.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes, they are.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Beautiful work.
Congratulations.
The floor is outside, and I'd like to congratulate my son, who had an important job.
Somewhere in the hallway, in the entire, it's nice for him.
He said it's Catherine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
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 Excuse me for a second.
All right, yes.
Let's get it.
We're just going to...
No, I...
Of course.
I'm a strong...
So we have four pieces now that are part of the Milford...
Thank you all very much. I'll give you guys the same option I gave them, we're going to go on to our boring policy work, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1732.83]
Thank you.
So, um, we have quite a few policies that we're bringing forward to you this evening. And some for a third reading, some for a second reading, and some for a first reading. And what I'd like to do is to begin with the third reading. Um, and this is on the on-campus recruitment. And if you remember when we brought that to you last week, uh, actually last month, both, um, the narrative, or I should say, the language tied to on-campus recruitment and then directory information, um, was, was, um, everybody around the table was struggling with it, and, and even felt that it was contradictory. So we went back to the drawing board, and, um, what we decided to do, we started to research other districts. We were trying to, because we, we were trying to, we tried desperately, Mr. Burton and I, to rework the language and kept hitting a wall. And then we looked for, um, policies online, and you actually found one from another district where they split them out. And so they have on-campus recruitment and then a separate policy on directory information. And when we looked at it, it just made so much more sense. Because on-campus recruitment is really military recruitment. There's a piece in here tied to magnet schools, but generally it's, the big piece is military recruitment. The, um, piece on, uh, directory information is tied to basically the Privacy Act, the Federal Privacy Act. So it's a, it's a different, um, a different source as well, and a different reason for why it was put in place. So the first thing I'd ask you to do is to take a look at the on-campus recruitment, um, policy. And you will see, um, we struck out the piece on directory information, that note on from ESSA, um, the piece on submits a written request that some, such information may not, um, not be released, et cetera. And we believe we've captured, um, the language. We actually looked at the statute and what the language was in the statute, and took some of that language straight out. So you can see the big issue is here about, um, the second paragraph, the 14th, uh, the fourth, third and fourth line down. Request in writing to opt out of the disclosure of this information, in which case the information may not be released. That's really what the, the, yeah, for 18-year-olds or for parents with students under the age of 18. They could, that they could opt out. And we always have done that, every year. Um, you know, it's, it's part of information that goes home to parents, and parents can immediately opt out if they so choose. Um, so this is just, uh, updating this, and so it makes it very clear to people. Glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from board members? Is this more clear for everybody?
No, it's, I think I'm a lot better.
So, now, do you want to vote as we go along, or this is a third reading?
Yeah, there's only a couple of them that we're voting on, so let's, let's just vote on them, each one, I think. Ms. DeBais, this is the, yes.
Okay. I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves policy 5145.14, on-campus recruitment with the changes made by administration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
They say none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So would it be all right if we moved to, um, the directory information policy? It's on page 61, only because it's related. So I just think that, you know, at least, um, that there's a context there. So, um, there's a definition of, uh, directory information in the opening, you know, contain, um, information contained in an education record of a student that would not generally be considered harmful or invasion of privacy. That, so it's FAPE, I mean, that's, that's what the source of this is. And that, you know, and what we read in the statute is, is there, all kinds of information could be considered in directory information. But a district can choose what information it will release on a student. And we thought it was important to make it parallel with the on-campus recruitment. So we said that what we would release under directory information is a student's name, address, and telephone number, period. And then what you'll see in the language here is similar language to on-campus recruitment. Um, you know, about, uh, two-thirds of the way down, um, you know, release students' names, address, and telephone numbers to military recruiters and/or institutions of higher ed, unless the parent guardian of a student or a secondary school student who has reached 18 years of age requests in writing to opt out of the disclosure of this information. So it's the same language, but it's clear now with respect to, one is directory information and the other is on-campus recruitment.
Questions? Dr. Gregory?
Does this not include email addresses? I know you're very explicit.
Correct. We did not include email addresses. There's, it was astounding in the law what could be included. Kids athletic, um, in teams that they played on.
Their height, their weight, if they're wrestling, yeah.
Correct, yeah. Lots of information, and we just, you know.
Any other questions from board members?
So this is a first reading, this policy. So now we can go back to, um, the policy, um, for a second reading, which is really tied to non-discrimination. But if you remember when we brought the policies to you in April, two months ago, we had a policy on non-discrimination and also, um, ADA. And there was a lot of confusion again around that, rightfully so, in terms of the language. So we went back, um, worked with our attorneys, and we, um, came up with, again, splitting them out so that there's two policies. So the first one is specific to students in relation to 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and Title II of the American Disabilities Act. And you, you can see here, um, it basically prohibits discrimination, but this is all tied to students with a disability, um, you know, under 504 or under ADA. And then, you know, responsibilities of, of the district. And that there's also a grievance procedure that has to be followed. I mean, that's all tied to the law, but that, um, needs to be spelled out. So you have the, um, actual policy itself, and then you have, um, an administrative regulation which speaks to, um, the complaint procedure, um, which is what's required. Yes.
Is there any chance that that phone number would ever change?
The Office of Civil Rights?
No, the, on page two of two, the coordinator, um, Director of Pupil Personnel Services, et cetera, at phone number. I wonder whether you want the phone number itself specified in the policy or just a reference to the phone number?
So if my memory, um, is correct, it's required?
That's a really good reason to have a good.
That we list the phone number?
Any questions from board members? They say none, this is a second reading, so we can have the motion approved.
I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves policy slash AR 5145.4, students and section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and Title II of the ADA of 1990. In its administrative regulation as presented. Uh, and its administrative regulation as presented by administration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Well, then the next policy is non-discrimination, and this is, um, a, a regulation, uh, that's being brought forward. And if you notice, the opening line of the non-discrimination regulation, this is tied to discrimination or harassment based on, um, characteristics, race, color, religion, age, sex, sexual orientation, marital status, national origin, disability, et cetera. That's what the discrimination policy has to do with. And that's why, again, we separated it out. I'm sorry, there's a, I'm sorry, there's a policy in there. My, my error. There are so many pages here. 24 is where the policy is. Forgive me about that. So again, well, it's the same thing. You can see it, you know, what it, what it involves, gender, identity also, or expression, um, again, subject to the limitations established by the law. So this is, um, a non-discrimination policy, um, that's pretty explicit. And, um, you will notice, um, Dr. Gregory, down at the bottom of this one, there are several telephone numbers, again, required. Uh, and that we indicate who's responsible for, um, you know, who's the Director of Human Resources, the Title IX, and then also who's the 504 ADA person for the district.
Any questions from board members?
I do the, just a tweaky one.
Yeah.
On 404, otherwise known as 29. There are two where it specifies in bold telephone number, and two where it just lists the telephone number. I don't have a preference either way, but if I consistent, it would be better.
So I'll make it consistent.
Yeah, 29?
29, right. Which in the policy, it just has the, it is in bolded, in other words. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So this one, the AR has to be voted upon.
Yep. Ms. DeBais?
Hey, I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves policy 5145.45, non-discrimination, and its administrative regulation as recommended by administration.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next policy, um, which quite honestly is a boilerplate, meaning it's dictated by law, is the policy on administering medications. Um, this has been reviewed by our attorneys. It's been reviewed by the Health Department. And of course, it's been reviewed by Carol Swift and myself. What pages?
This is a revision.
This begins on page 30.
This is a revision versus a review of policy. Mr. Jankowski?
Under the existing policy, this was supposed to be reviewed every two years. Has it been reviewed every two years?
It would say at the back. So it was, um, you can read, at the last page of the policy itself, it was reviewed in 2012, so no, it was not.
Yeah, I guess my ongoing question is, how do we ensure that a policy we're setting up we're going to actually follow? Is there any process in place for identifying these things?
That does help us, um, and I don't know, Mrs. Swift, if you can add to this, but CAVE, which we did not belong to in 2012,
Right.
sends through, I would say, four or five times a year, um, updates on particular policies, changes in, in legislation, um, and actually then, they generally will provide a back, a background to why the change, et cetera. Um, and so that kind of triggers. I mean, you know, that'll come into my office, you know, we, we, we also get it on disk, but we're looking through to see, okay, which one of those do we, do we necessarily have to, to address? So for example, a wellness policy would have come through this past year, because it's mandated by law that we have a new wellness policy. So now, I think we will be in a position to be able to do the updates, um, you know, much more readily. Yet, I mean, it's a matter of keeping on top of it. It's, there's a lot of policy. But if, but if we're not, if a board isn't attuned to it and the superintendent is not, then that's what happens as the years start to go by.
Any other questions? Mrs. Krizinski?
Um, it's just more of a housekeeping issue. On page 32, the red, the licensed athletic trainer. We have employed by the school district. Everywhere else, it says employed by the Board of Education.
So we most, we would put in the school suspect?
I was thinking.
The opposite?
Opposite. Since everywhere else in this policy that I read, it said it was employed by the Board of Ed. This was the one exception to that. That I found, anyway.
Mr. Wiskin?
From a consistency standpoint, yes, but it's my understanding that the only actual employee of the board is the superintendent. That everyone else is an employee of the school district, supervised by the superintendent. So they're not actually employed by that board directly. Is, did I get that correct?
I think, as we've kind of discerned over the course of the policy work, technically, I think they are Board of Ed employee, correct?
That's, I think that's how we use the terminology.
Ms. Paz, would you know that? Technically? I don't know, no.
I, I just want to make sure our policy is correct in, in, you know, designating individuals as Board of Ed employees or school district employees, if there is any differentiation.
I mean, it is the Milford Board of Education that enters into contracts and things like that. So I believe if.
Board of Ed.
I mean, our, we designate administration to carry those duties out, but we, I believe it is technically, I mean, our, the athletic trainer, I know, they're under contract, and the contract is with the Board of Education. It's not with Milford Public Schools. Correct, Mr.?
I'm okay with the way.
Mr. Kelly, is that correct?
You know, honestly, I think they're, they're used interchangeably.
Interchangeably.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Some, some contracts come through as Milford Public Schools, some come through as Milford Board of Education. I think, I think really, they're used interchangeably.
So why don't we stay with the Milford Board of Ed, since it's all, all the way through the policy? And if it was in black, which I'm presuming it was, then that's the way it has been.
This was in red, yeah.
No, I know that it was in black, which means it was part of the original policy. So why don't we just keep it as Board of Education?
Okay.
Mrs. Federico?
Thank you. Um, in the first paragraph, we're talking about the Director of Health approving the policy. And I was just wondering if we could, on the last page, where we have the, the, the date stamped for when the policy was adopted and revised, could we include the date that the Health Department reviewed and approved the policy? Just so that, looking at it, you would know for sure that it's already been approved by the Health Department?
That's the board's call. I mean, generally speaking, at the end of a, a policy, you're purely listing the dates of review and approval by the board.
Okay.
But that's, that's your call.
I just, it's, to me, the sentence says, "The Director of Health shall approve the policy, shall approve this policy." In reading it, I don't know if they've approved it or not.
Well.
That would be administration's responsibility to make sure that the Health Director has looked at the policy and signed off on it, so.
Correct, and, and they have. Um, and in fact, Joan also did. Campbell, who is our Director of Nurses, examined it as well.
And the approval is in writing?
I didn't get anything in writing, but verbally, I was on the phone with, uh, with them, and I knew you were on the phone.
Yeah, and they sent us their approved red version, so.
Just like when we had the medical, um, when we had Dr. Carlson review the concussion policy, I don't have anything in writing, but he reviewed it, absolutely. I mean, if you, we could, we could get something in writing to put it on record, but.
I mean, I don't want to start something that's inconsistent with the other policies. So if it doesn't make sense to put that on here, maybe just a different phrasing of that sentence.
Is that required? Is the, in this particular policy, is it required to have that sentence in this policy that the Director of Health has reviewed and approved of the language?
To be honest with you, I don't know, but if it's in black, it's been, it's been, it was in the policy in 2012, when it was created. And again, the attorneys would have reviewed it at that point. Um, that, it, it would have been, it looks like it was a new policy, which is surprising, but that's what it looks like.
In Jan, um, January 2012?
Correct.
So the second part says, um, it's, "Any changes prior to adoption by the board?" So I guess once we adopt it and approve it, then it's assumed that the Director of Health has already approved it. So then, I'm okay.
Okay, okay. I, I just know that, you know, I mean, I know that Carol Swift has spoken with both of them. And I called Joan on, um, last week and just said, "This is going before the board. I want to make sure we're set," you know, just to double check.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, would it make sense, does it change the meaning or make the meaning a little bit, just tweaks a little bit, saying, leaving the word "of" in there? "The Director of Health in concert with the district's school medical advisor shall approve of this policy, its regulations and any changes?"
I think "of" changes the meaning.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm prefer without the "of."
All right.
Just approve this policy.
Any other questions or comments on this? This is a first reading.
Okay, the next one is on health assessments and immunizations, which that begins on fifty-seven. There's a lot of new language here. Much of this new language is tied to immunization, because there are new laws now regarding immunization, so, you know, pages two and three is all about the changes, this is all tied to immunization.
I have, just housekeeping on page three of four, down at the bottom, there's an extra line in there that can be taken out.
Along the same lines, HIPAA is missing two of its words where it's spelled out.
Oh, PP.
It's Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act. One "A" is missing.
Can you repeat that, health insurance?
Uh, Portability and Accountability Act. The reference has it spelled out.
Where are you looking at that?
Um, about four lines above the extra line you wrote.
Okay. Any other questions? I found it interesting, Dr. Beazer, I don't know if you know this offhand or not, but health assessments aren't required anymore in grade three. It used to be going into school, grade three, grade six, grade ten. So grade, I noted grade three is not listed.
So I don't know, I can add.
Can you just make it so that's correct? That's a big jump, going from kindergarten to grade six, but it might be right.
I'll ask about that.
Any other questions on this policy?
Okay, and then we have sex discrimination and sexual harassment. These are, these are revisions here. This is again tied to students. The policy, it's a replacement of the policy. Law will review, since the policy has been adopted in nineteen ninety-three, going to your point, Mr. Jagosinski. A little scary.
Things may have changed.
Just slightly. So new, you know, clearer definitions, and then the complaint procedure. And they, and you have the AR with that.
Chair?
Yes, Mr. Jagosinski?
Two questions. One, do we have a sex discrimination and sexual harassment policy for employees as opposed to students?
We do.
Okay. The second comment is, based on the sexual harassment statement, definition of sexual harassment statement, if we had a teacher doing inappropriate things with a student, but the student didn't object, this policy would permit that activity?
What language does that?
Uh, sexual harassment, in a school setting, sexual harassment is conduct that, one, is sexual in nature, two, is unwelcome, three, denies or limits a student's ability to participate in or benefit from a school educational program. As long as the student, it was not unwelcome to the student, it would mean that it would be acceptable.
Should the "and" be an "or"?
I don't think it can be "or."
I don't think the students of age should be able to consent to whether it's welcome or unwelcome.
Then, if that, I believe you're right.
I think the school district.
Well, no, because we do have students who are of age.
Well, does that fall under, we have the abuse policy that we just, so if there was an employee having a sexual relationship with a student, Dr. Beazer, what would that fall under?
It would fall under sexual harassment, but it, I can guarantee you that consent or no consent has no bearing. I mean, it just doesn't, because, I mean, the, not only is the law explicit with respect to adults with students, but the, also, the code of conduct that is of every teacher that enters into Connecticut, it's part of their code of conduct. So I thought there was a piece in here that talked about adult-student, but this is, this is purely student-on-student, I believe, this, because this is under students. And even with students, the only way that it would be, I think it has to do with age, that's the struggle, quite frankly, is that if you have a fifteen-year-old girl who is having sexual relations with a eighteen-year-old boy, even though it's consensual, it's against the law.
Yeah, you know, but this does not say student-on-student, I mean, it's not.
Item number one, under sexual harassment, in those bulleted points, is, would be the teacher and the student, because it says, "will affect the student's grades or other academic progress."
The first paragraph specifically says, identifies board employees or third parties subject to the control of the board, so that would be teachers, custodians, I mean, any, so it does include adults.
Right, and it, in effect, would allow for unwelcome, not unwelcome, but it would allow sexual conduct between a student and a, you know, an employee. I agree, there are other things that forbid that, but I don't think we should have a policy that allows, you know, allows that.
If you, if you read the bulleted items on page one, it specifically identifies sexual harassment as some of the things you just mentioned.
Right, but it's only sexual harassment, according to this plain reading of this document, if it's unwelcome. If the student doesn't object to the affair, according to this policy, then it's not forbidden, which is, you know, I don't think what we want.
But I think if you read that definition, and then you get to the second last, or the last sentence before the numbers, although not an exhaustive list, the following are examples of the type of contact prohibited by the policy against sexual harassment, and then you go down and you say, number three, "displays of sexually suggestive objects or use of sexually suggestive or obscene remarks, invitations, letters, notes, slurs, jokes, touching of a sexual nature," I mean, so that, those are forms of sexual harassment.
But according to this policy, it's only sexual harassment if it's not, if it's not, if it's unwelcome. If the student doesn't object, what this says is, if the student doesn't object, then it's not harassment. I know that's not what we mean, but that's what this says.
Are you saying that because the word "and" is in there, so you're saying one, two, and three means?
Absolutely.
So if it was one, two, or three, or one, or two, or three?
I don't think that that does it.
Doesn't work, because it has to be one.
Right.
So I know that there is the issue of it being unwelcome, if it was, again, take age out of it for a second, if it was student-on-student.
Right.
Okay? If it's, there's an age piece between students, eighteen-year-old and a fourteen-year-old, does it make any difference whether it's welcome or unwelcome? The parents come forward and they want, you know, they're filing a formal complaint, but the police on behalf of their fourteen-year-old daughter, for example, I don't want to be stereotypical, I'm just using that example.
Right.
But the same applies with respect to an employee, so, you know, up at the top, the opening paragraph, "Any student or employee who engages in contact prohibited by the board's sex discrimination and sexual harassment policy shall be subject to disciplinary action." So the idea of consent, there is no consent that would be admissible or accepted under the law when you're talking about a teacher on a student. And in Connecticut, Connecticut is stricter than most states, if a teacher literally engages in a sexual relationship with a student, regardless of whether it's consent and regardless of the student's age, if the student is eighteen years of age, they lose their license and it's mandatory one-year jail. That's Connecticut law with respect to that, so it.
I agree with that. What I'm saying is that this policy does not reflect that statement.
I think, I think what Mr., I don't want to speak for you, but I think what Mr. Jagosinski is pointing to is the number two under the definition of sexual harassment, that it specifically says, it defines harassment as being something that is unwelcome, whereas the reality is that it's much more broad than that. So is there some way that we can remove the word unwelcome, or, I mean, if it's welcome or unwelcome, if it doesn't really matter, then can we do away with that word altogether? Maybe you can run that by legal?
I will do that.
Or they have some other suggestion to make it a more broad statement, that it's any, I mean, from what I'm hearing you say, it would be any conduct that is sexual in nature and denies or limits a student's ability to participate in.
Even that, I mean, in fact, any conduct that's sexual in nature with a student by an adult in our system is wrong. Under every circumstance.
I think probably from a legal point of view, though, there might be some.
Depends how the law is actually written, we just should check it out, make sure we get the correct verbiage.
Right.
So that we're in compliance.
So I'll make sure that we follow up on that. It's a, it's a very good question, and what I'm hearing you say is, is that you believe it, but it should be more explicit right here. Okay, so that's, that's for a first reading.
Were there any other concerns on this policy?
The same housekeeping thing about phone numbers. I think the AR, it's in caps.
Oh, okay.
The final policy that we're bringing forward for a first reading is on student wellness, so this is a mandated policy by law, and in fact, there's all kinds of new regulations that are going, that are going into effect as of July one, so this will come back for a second reading, you know, July, that, is it, I know, fifth, twelfth, or something, tenth, something like that. So there's a lot of information in here and links to so many of the various agencies at the state level and even federal, tied to foods, snacks, what can and cannot be sold, et cetera, so rather than spell all that out, we do, we do have the links here. Eileen, Falcis is here.
I didn't see the links. It says, click on the links, but, oh, is that what those are?
The underlined, the underlined pieces are links, right. So Mrs. Falcis is here to answer any questions, but again, this is, this deals with healthy eating, it deals with breakfast and lunch, it deals with, you know, beverages that are sold, it deals with, you know, what are the, most of this, we're already doing, we're already doing it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, because we're part of the healthy foods program at the state level, I mean, there's all these restrictions, and we follow all of that, so we are in compliance every single year with the state. I don't know if you want to explain what the newest piece is in here, Eileen?
Basically, it puts together a lot of different laws and regulations from the federal government and the state, and tries to put it all into one document, and to make it easier to read, the links really help, as opposed to this document, when we started with, I don't know, twenty-something pages.
Like forty pages, they brought it to me, I almost choked.
Yes, so it does, if you really are interested, you can press on the link, it does give you the details, but there are regulations that tell, you know, like, we cannot sell soda in schools, and we never have, and we can't sell vaterate, and that's a law, and then the, what the board votes on, healthy food certification every year, that's what you vote on, and that's what we put in here, because we've been, we make a practice of doing that every year. It really, most of it tells you that, you know, really says a good statement about what we believe in in Milford, and that we want healthy, a healthy environment for our students, and, without making it unreadable, by putting, making it too long.
So I had a concern about the fact that we vote annually to opt, to participate in the healthy food certification, so policy says that we participate in, but what if we decide not to participate in? I mean, it kind of, the policy kind of stipulates that we do participate, where in fact, it's optional.
Right.
And we have to, we annually, we're still required to annually vote on this?
Yes, on, we're required to vote on the healthy food certification piece. So if that were to change, we can change the.
Have to change the policy. We have policies that.
We're sort of have regulations that go with the policy, we can change the regulations without having to change the policy.
And where is the, and then we exempt, when we vote, we do vote in two steps, so the second thing we do every year is to exempt, I gave them the, so that we can, you know, do like sports events and stuff.
Right, events like a concert or a sports event, that is.
So where is that stipulated in here, that we still have the option to do that? Because it seems to me, when I was reading this, I had concern over its specificity that this is what we do, and I didn't, I couldn't really tell where the, where the opt-out was, you know, where the information is, that we actually do opt-outs, so that we can, were we exempt, so that we can?
Well, you definitely vote every year, so if you were to vote to not exempt, you know, make a change in how, what you want to do for the following year, then we could make a change to the policy.
The, I'm sorry, what? What?
It just doesn't seem to me like we should make a change, we should be changing the policy.
Can we rewrite it? The policy should be general enough so that we don't necessarily have to be always rewriting it, but my concern was that, so the, the, on page two of three, third paragraph up from the bottom, "The sources of food sales to students must comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards, including but not limited to cafeteria, alacard, vending machines, school stores, and fundraisers." Those pieces are not part of the exemption, correct? Are any of those part of the?
If you participate in the healthy food certification, they are not part of it, you cannot exempt them.
Okay. Competitive foods are what?
Competitive foods are a, is a state regulation that's been around for at least thirty years, and it defines what is a competitive food and what is the timeframe for us to be selling food. So for example, we have timeframes of our meals, breakfast and lunch, and it defines the period of time so that we're, there's not competing things in the district when we're open for meal times. So they say, first, so competitive foods cannot be sold at the same time that we are open for our, to sell healthy meals to the students, and it's thirty minutes before and thirty minutes after. And then the competitive foods also include what is sold, so that we cannot sell caffeinated beverages, and sodas, and chewing gum, that type of thing.
And, okay, and then the next paragraph above that, so would that be the end of the fourth paragraph up from the bottom? "Milford Public Schools shall prohibit the sale of foods of minimal nutritional value as defined by the USDA, and will ensure that all foods sold to students separately from school meals meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards. All beverages sold are served to students on school premises, will be healthy choices that meet requirements of blah, blah, blah." So is that part of the opt-out, the exempt?
Well, the Connecticut Nutrition Standards. Well, the Connecticut nutrition standards are what we, what you voted to continue to comply with. So that's why we have the Connecticut nutrition standards listed there. What you cannot opt out of is the beverages, which is the next sentence, the all beverages sold to students. That is a, that's a state statute.
So at a sports event, they can't sell Gatorade?
They do sell Gatorade.
You, you cannot, that is during the school day. The beverages can't be sold during the school day. You can't sell it out of a vending machine, but you can sell it at a football game.
Because this says all beverages sold are served to students on school premises. It doesn't say during the school day.
I, we could clarify that, but the Connecticut, the Connecticut, excuse me, the Connecticut nutrition standards and participation in that and voting on that defines that you can exempt those other things. Although it's not written here, if you click on the links, it'll say that you can opt out of those. You can sell those things at a event. And then beverages only cover the school day and vending machines.
So I guess my concern is that the policy itself doesn't have any information about the opportunity to exempt and that, because we do typically, we do exempt.
Right.
You know, as much as we, as often as we vote to participate, we then vote to exempt. So I think, I'd like to see that specified somehow in the policy.
Do you want that in the policy or do you want that in administrative regulation, which makes it much more detailed then?
Well, in honesty, I found this policy to be a little bit more specific than I thought it might need to be because of that, because we don't want to be constantly coming back and changing the policy. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure. I had a problem with the policy in general because I know that the wellness law also applies to physical activity. And I found the policy was kind of light on the physical activity part and really heavy on the nutrition part. And I'd like to see a little bit more specificity with the, as far as phys ed and recess, you know, how much physical activity are we comfortable with during the day? So that's a separate issue. But just in talking about the nutrition piece, even the, at the very top where it talks about my plate, I mean, that's something that is apt to change as well. So I'm not, do we have to have that, those specific, that specific information in this policy?
Is there an AR that goes along with this?
There ultimately will be, I think.
So maybe something moves into that.
Yes, it could, something could move into the AR. I mean, it says that, it does say that there will be an AR. But, I mean, because the current administration is talking, already talking about changing nutrition standards for the federal government. So this very well change. So it seems to me that it might be more correct to just stipulate that we will adhere to the federal and state regulations, period. Because whatever they are, we're going to adhere to them. So as they change, we don't need to come in and specifically, I mean, if my plate doesn't exist in six months, then we have to come back and change the policy technically.
Right.
So why don't we take another look at this and make it less definitive? From what I'm hearing, particularly those two paragraphs there on the top of page two, two large paragraphs.
Yeah, it seems to me that pages one and three make a fine policy and page two, put that in the AR. I mean, it's just, you know, because you have your definitions of wellness. You have your goals for nutrition, education, and physical activity on page one. And page three, you just say, yeah, super tense, let's take care of this. And all the rest of it in the middle there, page two, seems to be the kind of details that belong in the AR. Just worth a thought.
I mean, I really like the general statement of wellness. I think that's great. But if we're going to be, if we're going to have specificity about nutrition in this policy, I feel we need to be a little bit more specific about physical activity as well. I mean, I'd like to see some kind of statement that, you know, we're going to have recess in what grades, that the recess will be X number of, you know, how long is the recess going to be? If we're going to be that specific. Yes, Ms. Federico?
Sorry, just a slightly different topic. If I read the last two paragraphs that are on page three and the bottom paragraph on page two, it seems like there's a lot of action being taken about asking for suggestions and reporting on the assessment of the policy's implementation. Is that all new? And is that something that you would do in the future that you're not doing now? It feels kind of broad.
I think it is new.
It's kind of broad, but it really, it does, the new regulations do specify that they're, that we have to, that it does get reviewed every three years in our administrative reviews for the school food service program. And they want to make sure that everybody knows that they have the ability to have input in our wellness activities. And that it is, it really wants, they want to bring attention to it so that it can be, other people can have input and that it would be reported, you know, reported and recorded on so that it's measurable.
I guess my concern is if we're putting it in the policy, I just want to make sure that these are all things that we are going to be able to do to the letter of how it's written in the policy.
Right. I believe it is required in this new, the new regulations that just came out, that this is a piece that is required.
But you used the term regulations, so regulations is different than the policy.
Statute, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. The Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act that has this regulation that we must have a wellness policy is what I was talking about, not the regulations for the, for the policy.
Okay. So let us take a look at it. I'm sure that Cave has done a paper on, I'm using the term paper loosely, but on the wellness policy. And we can get answers to the questions that you're raising about what is required in this. And I also hear what you're saying, that some of this is too explicit as opposed to the sexual harassment policy, which is not explicit enough. So we could take a look at that. All right, thank you.
Any other questions on this policy?
The next item on the agenda at this point is, those were all first reading policies, is the Human Resources Report. Mrs. Casla?
Thank you. You have my Harvey Monthly Report this month listing the job postings, personnel recommendations, retirements, resignations, terminations, and stipend appointments. You'll notice there are quite a few jobs posted. As soon as the budget was passed, we decided to go forward with all of our postings. And we've, I'm pleased to announce, we've actually hired two people so far, two new teachers, both in shortage areas. So real pleased with the progress and the quickness of everybody involved in the hiring process. So thank you very much.
You got a third one today?
Yes, the Latin teacher did accept today. So we're well on our way to a successful hiring season. Listed under the stipend appointments, you'll see our, annually, we pay our paraprofessionals. They have a stipend in their contract, see, that's $350 or $400. And you'll see the list of pairs that we paid this year for that. As well as for next school year, 2017, 2018, who our principals have appointed as department chairs, team leaders, et cetera. So, and then you've got any questions?
How many retirements are we up to now?
Oh, that's right, thank you. We're up to thirteen retirements for the end of the school year and three that already occurred for a total of sixteen. If you recall, three people left, like, in their early fall.
Are they all on this list?
No, they have, they wouldn't all... They've come periodically as people have put their notice in. But there are a few on this month's report as well. And that's teachers, I apologize. And then administrators, we have two, two retirements this year.
Or three, actually? Three? Three? Pat Drew?
Three, right. Excuse me. Three administrators.
And what is those already happened, correct?
Yeah, the administrators are all six-thirty, June 30th.
Oh.
Who's that? Pat Drew from Law, Kathy Williams from East Shore, and Sharon Kluchnick from...
Oh, that's right. I forgot about Sharon. Mrs., Dr. Gregory?
I was curious, on page eighty-one, eighty-two, and eighty-three, why are there two sixth-grade team leaders as opposed to the other grades?
Let's see. I'm trying to see if it's the same at every school because we have...
There is, there's a seven, eight split.
Yeah, as we say, we've collapsed teams at a couple of the schools. Right, so we've, so instead of, traditionally, there was two sixth-grade teams, two seventh, two eighth, but we've collapsed a seventh and eighth. So it's brought the number, it's changed the number. So there's a traditional seven, a traditional eight, and then a split. Instead of four, there's three, in other words. And obviously because of class, because of enrollment, and those teams coming down, we've had to address that over the years.
So there's two grade six teams?
Correct.
Could you help me understand the difference between a team leader and humanities as opposed to the teacher leaders? I just... So for each of the grades, there's a team leader for the humanities and then there are teacher leaders?
Yeah, so the team leaders are in charge of the team that's made up of all of the teachers in all of the subject areas, where the teacher leaders are specifically for the subject area throughout the school. So a sixth-grade team leader could teach math, but they have a team of the math, the social studies, the science, et cetera. But the teacher leaders have social studies throughout all of the grades in that building. So it's more curriculum, curriculum-based rather than...
Right, no, I guess I'm with you there. So there's an overarching team leader for the humanities?
Correct, that would cover your specials, your art, music.
That's what I...
Sorry, special ed.
Thank you.
They kind of are all covered.
It is a word I'm trying to change. It is not the humanities.
I always get confused with that word.
You will change that word.
Right, special ed has a one, humanities has a one. Okay, sorry.
Ms. Jagosinski?
Regarding the retirements, the number of retirements that we have this year, how does that compare to an average year, more or less?
I think it's a little bit lower than normal. But I don't think we're done with our retirements yet. Traditionally, the last day of school might bring in one or two.
No, our average is eighteen.
Eighteen, yes.
That's what we're basing on.
So we have sixteen now.
Any other questions on this report?
I do.
Yes, Dr. Gregory?
Around page eighty-four, there's the two different prices, with O-92, without O-92. What if they get their O-92 over the summer? That column on the right will change?
If they would, if they get it before the beginning of the school year, yes, we would give them higher. If not, we would wait till next year.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the end-of-the-year transfers. Mr. Richard Telly?
Thank you, Dr. Pieser. Mrs. Glenn, members of the board. We have reported tonight, we do each two. And as I've been reporting to you each month, we always expect that we'll have some surpluses and some line items and some deficits that we have to cover in other line items. And we bring the, we bring transfers to you in June and then again in July. This is, these are the ones that we feel confident in so far. And I'll go through each one. And then we have our recommendations as to where we would transfer that money to. So as I've been reporting to you, our teacher salaries this year has been pretty much right on. Whereas in the past, when we had those years when we only had eight retirements and we would have big surpluses. And then we had one year where we had twenty-eight retirements and then we had shortages that we had to cover in the teacher's line. But this year, we're pretty accurate. We project that we'll end the year around sixty thousand. There might be a little bit additional that comes to you in July. One of the reasons for it, and there's a couple of line items here that reflects it, is the hiring freeze that we put into place, that Dr. Pieser put into place in January, pretty much as a result of the governor's mid-year rescissions on city revenue and Mayor Blake's directives to city departments. And then Dr. Pieser followed the lead and in citing the need to partner with the city in trying to, you know, fill the gap in the lost revenue that wouldn't be coming to Milford from the state of Connecticut. So there was one teacher position that was not filled. It wasn't completely because of the hiring freeze. We had not filled the position up to that point. And so the decision was made not to fill it through the end of the year. But we project that in that account, we will have probably a little bit more than sixty thousand dollars at the end of the year. A theme that we've been talking to you throughout the year is the concerted effort that the district has made to reduce the number of substitutes that are needed throughout the year. And that's, if you recall, at budget time for the seventeen, eighteen budget, we came to you and said, we expect that we're going to have money left over in the substitute account. And that's why next year, we believe that we'll be able to increase the substitute pay for elementary and middle schools without having to put more money into the seventeen, eighteen budget. But having said that, you can see there what we're projecting for substitute in the substitute teacher line. So it's a considerable amount of money. The custodian maintenance, there were two positions that were not filled after the hiring freeze was put into place. So we're projecting a thirty thousand dollar surplus. Same thing with the non-certified professional salaries. There was a clerical position in the HR department that was not filled. And that will generate a twenty-eight thousand dollar surplus. As I've been reporting to you from the quarterly reports, transportation, all will recognize surpluses, primarily due to when we budgeted for the decrease in the walking distance guidelines. We budgeted for the worst-case scenario, what we thought might be. It did not materialize. So there was a surplus that I've been telling you about in regular education. Also tied to that was Trumbull Voag. We budgeted for two buses. And because of the locations of where the students are physically, where their homes are physically located, and some, some very good work in the, by the transportation coordinator and the folks at Durham, we were able to condense that into one bus. So we have, we had one bus that we did not need in the Trumbull Voag line. And the last piece was the transportation for non-public. And that was primarily due to St. Gabriel's closing. Gasoline and diesel fuel, we will have another surplus this year. And that's solely due to the projections for rising gas prices just haven't panned out. The gas prices have remained, gas and diesel prices have remained fairly steady. And we work off the city's bid. So the bid prices have been less than we've budgeted for. It's difficult, too, when you're putting the budget together, and I say this all the time, when we're putting the budget together in October, and we're not going to go out to bid for a full another year, trying to figure out what, you know, what might happen with regard to gas prices, you know, can fluctuate one way or the other. But we'll have fifty-three, approximately fifty-three thousand dollars are best estimate for gasoline and diesel fuel. And then the last one, the instructional freeze account. As a prudent measure, as we've told you before, we set aside ten percent of that account and we hold it. And we look at, you know, come January and then come March, if we believe that we're going to end the year in black, we will release that money and the principals will be allowed to purchase items that are budgeted for. But we're telling them that they need to freeze. This year, we made the decision, because we knew that we had state, you know, the state problems that were coming our way, we made the decision not to release those funds. And so they remain frozen, which will recognize a one-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar surplus. dollar, um, uh, surplus in that account. So, um, if you look at the next page, this is where we would propose to transfer to. As I've been reporting to you, uh, during the quarterly reports, the, um, health insurance, we are, we're going to have a deficit in that account. It's due to, um, the, the premiums and the actual claims, um, that have come in, um, are, have exceeded what we had anticipated, uh, when the budget was passed back in May of two thousand sixteen. When we put the budget together, we work off of the, um, the recommendations of the, the city's health insurance consulting, um, and at the time, that was, uh, the, the number that was in the budget was the, the number that the health insurance consultants had given us. But obviously, um, premiums and claims have exceeded that amount. Buildings and grounds projects, a- as you know, each year, the board has been very good in allowing, um, allowing administration to use any surplus funds for much-needed buildings, grounds, and equipment projects. Annually, um, a memo, um, is forwarded to you from Dr. Feizer. You received that, I believe, on May twenty-sixth, that outlines the number, or the, um, those projects and those purchases that we would undertake if there was monies left over at the end of the year. At this time, we would earmark ninety-five thousand dollars for that. Next month, when we come back to you, that number may grow in that particular account, if we have additional surpluses over and above what we're seeing at this point. The last piece, um, and this is tied, uh, directly to the, uh, the mid-year rescissions that the governor made, that I already spoke about, um, and the, the cost-saving measures that were put into place. And so, um, we're recommending that, um, of four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars be returned to the city, um, in a good-faith effort on the board's part, to, um, to partner with the city, to get through, uh, the difficult times that have been, um, that, that the city is realizing because of the state's, state's budget crisis. And, and, and the asterisks, um, point out where we're basically designated those, those areas from. But the three hundred and eighty-two thousand, um, is the shortage, uh, that the governor cut back on the educational cost-saving funds for this current fiscal year, for sixteen, seventeen. And then the balance is funds that were generated as a result of cost-saving measures put into place and, um, uh, positions not being hired, for a total of four hundred and forty-nine thousand. So with that, I'll be quiet and answer any questions that you have.
Questions for the board members? Dr. Gregory?
So what sort of instructional supplies would principals have otherwise been able to purchase with the hundred and five thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars that apparently is in the black? Because there's four hundred and forty-nine thousand into, requested to go back to the city? What sort of materials could have been bought with that for students?
There's, there's any number, and some is, some is instructional, some is non-instructional supplies. It's in the six thousands account, but, um, it, it, it could be any, um, it could be any number of things. It could be copy paper, it could be, um, um, it's, it's not textbooks, that's in a separate account, um, pencils, a- anything like that. I don't have my budget with me, I should, right?
Crayons.
I'm sorry?
Crayons.
Yeah, a- anything like that.
Supplies, so think in terms of the various, um, disciplines-
Sort of consumables, right?
There could be consumable, consumables, absolutely. You know, there could also be something for, uh, that would be in a, uh, that maybe be in, um, in an area that, um, you know, I'm just thinking of in the, in the gym, uh, that there could be, you know, some supplies for the gymnasium, but there also could be supplies that would be used out on the playground. Not equipment, but, you know, some supplies.
Music, you know, in, in, in all of the specialty areas, music, art, P E, there's equipment that could be purchased.
If, if we were in the black, which we are.
We are.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm saying it's not in the instructional supplies whether we're going to be in, in the black, but the entire, the entire budget itself. And again, we, we made the decision this year, when the bad news came down from the state, we made the decision not to unfreeze that money. We, we, we told you about that during the budget sessions. Uh, we also told you that, told you about that at the, um, quarterly reports, that that money was frozen, and it was going to be, it was going to remain on, it was going to be, remain frozen.
So you freeze ten percent every year, and then around mid-February, my recollection, you make a decision whether or not you're going to release the monies or not. Mr. Jagzinski?
Does this instructional supplies include, uh, books that are in the classroom for the Reader's Workshop permit?
Um, class, if I may, um, classroom libraries could be a portion of this, but there are other, we have district funds for that as well, um, specifically, but we've also spent the past few years making sure that our, our classroom libraries are robust, um, and we also have a district account that in case we open a new section, or there's a deficit in one particular classroom, we're able to amend that particular collection. So just, uh, if I may also point out that this is ten percent of a school's entire instructional supply, and once we told them in February, they were able to plan out for the remainder of the year to budget accurately. So at this point, you know, we are two days away from the end of school, we, uh, and what I think I'm assuming is that you're saying that if we could turn this back into the schools, what would they be doing with it? At this point, it would be difficult, to be frank.
Because they've already adapted to the fact that they're not going to have that?
Correct. We are actually in the process of ordering supplies for next year, based on next year's budget and per teacher allocation. So then to, I mean, we've already made it through the end of this year, we're beginning the process for next year already, so.
So, and it's not unprecedented, excuse me, it's not unprecedented that, that, that the past few years, the, the money has been released and they've been able to spend it, but in prior years back, when, um, you know, when there were significant budget difficulties within the city, um, the board, uh, or did not unfreeze that money.
Mrs. Pedricos?
So just wanted to clarify what you're saying, that supplies being ordered now for next year are going to be charged to next year's budget, is that correct?
Correct. We asked the teachers to put together the order. It would not be charged until after the new budget comes in.
The purchase order, purchase order, uh, will be drawn on the, the new budget year, and nothing would be delivered or paid for until the new budget year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But, but, I'm sorry, but just to go back to that, but, but we, the teachers do their ordering for next year before they leave. So we have to get them now.
Okay.
Mrs. Krzyszynski?
I was just curious what the, uh, what was budgeted, or what was the approved budget, um, for the teacher substitute mine, originally?
One million seventy-seven, I believe.
It could be. I, I apologize, I didn't bring my budget with me. We, we can give you the exact number.
So, just curious, is, a, a percentage of the three-thirty of the original budget number, how, what percentage is that, that we didn't use?
If Jeff's number is right, and I think it is, it's about a third.
Quite a bit.
And, and you, for next year's budget, you reduced that amount? You already made an adjustment to next year's substitute line?
We did.
Based on the fact that this year, we were, had made the concerted effort not to pull teachers out as much, so you anticipated needing less funds for substitute teachers next year as well?
Yes, and, and the, the increase, the increase in the elementary and middle school substitutes-
Oh, that's right, you didn't need any further fu- funding, right? So you reduced, plus you didn't, it didn't cost us anymore to do that.
Correct.
And then you took another hundred thousand dollars out?
Yes. Yeah, I, I believe, again, um, when Dr. Feizer gets the budget, I believe that we, at budget time, we came in with the same number as last year's budget- That's correct. And then reduced it by a hundred thousand, um, because, because we're seeing the experience that we're having at this point.
So you, so then it would be one point six, so we could potentially have an, an additional hundred thousand dollars extra?
Or two.
Or, or two, but we've increased the, the pay-
Right.
Next year.
And that's, and that's why we, that's why we didn't, we knew, we knew we were going to, uh, or we were requesting from the board to be able to, um, um, raise the fees, or raise the, the per diem for, um, the elementary and middle schools. Besides the increase in the pay, we also believe that will attract more substitutes, which, which means there, there were many substitute, uh, positions this year that went unfilled. That's another reason why there's such a surplus, because we just couldn't get elementary and middle school substitutes. So many of those were, were, you know, there may have been a teacher absence, um, there may not have been a substitute hired for it. And that's why we came to you and said, you know, we want to raise the price, uh, but we don't, we don't believe that we're going to need anything more in the budget. And then, as experience went on, we, um, you know, as the experience of the year went on, and we saw that, that we were, we were actually way ahead of where we thought we would be, then we reduced a hundred thousand dollars, um, after the board walked in a reduction. So the budget, let, let me just, let me grab it and go in there, but the budget for- Okay, the budget for sixteen, seventeen, um, was one million, one forty-eight, three hundred. And we proposed, we did go down, one million, oh seventy-three, three hundred. And, and then we reduced a hundred thousand dollars from that. So it will be, uh, actually ninety, uh, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred will be the final budget number. So considerable reduction from last year's adopted number.
So, Mrs. Pedricos?
So just doing some quick math, because I needed this to understand it for myself. If we started at a million, one forty-eight for sixteen, for the year sixteen, seventeen, and we're reducing it now by three-thirty, that brings us to eight hundred and eighteen thousand for the year sixteen, seventeen. And then for the year seventeen, eighteen, we're now saying the budget is nine seventy-three. So the seventeen, eighteen budget is a hundred and sixty thousand, roughly higher, and we're attributing that mainly to the increase in the pay rate.
Increase in the pay rate plus more, more positions, more substitute positions will be filled.
Okay. Okay.
So how, how many man-hour d- I, I, I don't know how you figure it out, but how many days of substitutes do we usually have, or how many?
I think we gave that figure out, did we give it out in the last month?
Don't recall.
Okay.
But it's a lot.
That's like a hundred and, that's like a thousand, one hundred thousand dollars is like a, a thousand, eleven hundred days of substitutes.
Depends if it's the seventy-five rate or the ninety rate.
Well, that's the ninety rate.
The ninety rate, so.
I mean, I calculated at the ninety rate, you know, taking the budget and just dividing by the ninety, and we would have to have sixty substitute teachers a day, on average.
But also out of that account comes the, the long-
I was just going to say that.
Long-term substitute positions, if somebody goes out on maternity leave, um, that's, that, that could be much greater.
Two forty-seven, fifty per day. So if someone's out on maternity, the first thirty days, they get paid either seventy-five or ninety, and then once they're, they hit day thirty-one, they go up to two forty-seven, fifty per day, because of the amount of responsibility and, uh, report cards, and all, all that they have to do is a long-term sub.
And, and it's, and, and I think, um, I, I, I believe that, um, we, we also gave you some examples, Dr. Fe- Feizer gave some examples of, it's not just teacher sick days, the, teachers could be pulled out of the classroom for any number of reasons, um, which is what we're, particularly what we're trying to cut down on. When E, when E I, P P Ts are held-
P P Ts that means-
You know, meetings within the school, um, we're trying, principals are making a concerted effort not to pull the teachers out when they're in class. So, you know, the, the, the whole effort, I think, is, has really paid off. We're, we're experiencing, we're, we're spending much less on substitutes than we were before, and at the same time, we're solving a, a problem that we have in not being able to attract qualified substitutes, and, and some of those, um, some of those positions are going unfilled, and there's, there's not a substitute, qualified substitute teacher for one of those students that day.
Mrs. Swift, don't teachers have to attend a P P T?
Yes.
So how, how are, how are you avoiding that, then?
We're not avoiding that, but they, we, they will coordinate it so that there's a single sub for the day that would cover all P P Ts.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so I think that there's good coordination with that now.
Are there building substitutes?
It's like a, I, I think I hear this, like, in one school like JFK, is there a per, I guess you'd call it permanent substitute or a building substitute? And are they paid a different rate, and are they paid out of this substitute?
There's, um, at the elementary level, we utilize interns from local universities, so that's from a different account. They service the first line of, they, they get filled first into whatever job opens first in each building. At the middle school, we do have, um, building substitutes, but I believe that they're paid from a different account, aren't they, the three middle school permanent subs, building subs?
No, they're paid out of this account.
They are, okay, so they're-
Just the interns are out of the other account.
Okay, so, um, and the high schools have two interns.
So those building subs, are they paid ninety dollars a day, two forty-seven a day, or are they a salary?
They're a flat rate, um, I can't remember what it equates to. It's somewhere in between the ninety and the two forty-seven, maybe it's about a hundred and forty or something like that per day, um, to give somebody. We use that program ideally as hiring somebody who's certified and trained to become a teacher, but can't, you know, just hasn't entered their first position, to help us out and to help them out.
We also, also often put them in more than five periods a day.
True.
You know, they're covering more, because it's a flat rate.
Right. And it's somebody who's very familiar to the school, to the students, to the teachers, so it really works well.
Other questions?
On a different part of this topic, yes.
On this talk, on those transfers?
Yes.
Yep.
So, um, minutes on page one oh two. It's showing that the reduction from the Board of Finance, Board of Alderman, of the three hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars, part of that was sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars of equipment, furniture, and computers. Why would that not be considered something that could be purchased out of these funds? Those are not things that are a single-year item.
They probably will be. That's, on the, um, on, on the memo that Dr. Feizer sent to you, there's, there's a couple of items on there about building-based equipment and, um, um, those types of things, equipment, computers, uh, furniture and fixtures, where if there's additional money, um, next month, we will come to you with a triage for, for those, for those items that could be considered.
Why would we not use some of this four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars to purchase those things that got cut? Before we give money back to the city, why don't we actually buy the things for our kids?
Yeah, because there's an additional sixty-seven thousand that we're giving over the cost sharing.
So I'll just weigh in on that, uh, you know, and it's the board's decision, and I respect it wholeheartedly, but, um, going back to last December and January, when the decision was made by the, um, governor, or actually, it was, um, communicated by, um, O P M, Officer of Policy and Management, that the city was going to lose, um, at, at mid-year, the remaining, um, monies in the educational cost sharing. It, quite frankly, immediately, you know, my thought, and I certainly consulted with, um, cabinet members, was that we had an obligation to really, um, help out with that as much as possible, and if we had the money to be able to give back to the city so that they don't lose it, because it, it's educational cost sharing monies, and the city certainly has been supportive of us. And then, uh, so that, that's the three hundred and eighty-two thousand, and then the, the other piece was looking at where the savings, you know, came from. And so, for example, um, you know, all of the transportation pieces, or the pieces around the freeze, um, you know, we, we- the freeze, you know, we, we just felt that, you know, and I certainly was a strong advocate for saying that we just thought it was a good thing to do. A good fake gesture on the part of us to say that we would turn this money back over to the city.
So it really boils down to the Board's feeling as to whether we, as to how much we give back to the city. I mean, do we give back what's been suggested? Do we give back only the education cost sharing amount? Do we, I mean, we're not, technically, we're not obligated to give back anything, to be honest with you. Yes, Mrs. Federico?
If I may make a suggestion, so we're looking at the, the cost sharing amount was $382,000, and we're looking at potentially giving back $449. And I know the, the $449, there's some logic in that, right? So there's logic about we had savings because, you know, we put some freezes in place, we put some holds in place for this particular reason. So to me, if we put the freeze in place for this reason, we could give that money back to the city. And I understand, you know, similar situation with the transportation. I'm wondering about the, the savings on the gasoline cost. Perhaps that's something that, you know, we were able to save that. We didn't put a special measure in place, but we were just able to save that, and maybe that's money that we could, could keep in the school budget and not, and reduce the amount that we give back to the city by the 53,786.
And that is, we did not take that, oh, take that into consideration. It's the asterisk pieces here that went into the $449?
Well, well, that's what I thought, there, and I see that there's no asterisks on it, but the amount that's being put into Blue Cross Blue Shield and Buildings and Grounds is 330. So I believe the amount of 330 corresponds to the 330 in substitute savings. So maybe you could just clarify for me how the 53 is treated?
53, I'm not sure.
Gasoline and diesel.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. If, if you add up the asterisks, they will come out to 449,000. That's all we were saying. In all, in all honesty, not honesty, but in all accuracy, you don't have to tie any of the money, you know, where it's coming from. We just did it so it would be better understood by the Board where, what our logic was and what our thinking was. But you, you could, you could pull any of these numbers out and reduce the number going back to the city. That's totally up to the Board.
I think what Mrs. Federico was doing just simply was looking at 235,000 plus 95,000 equals 330,000.
That should be asterisk, there should be an asterisk to the gasoline.
And then, I think there should be, yeah. And then she's looking at the substitute teachers as 333,000, so that all the other items, including the gasoline, if you add them up, probably it's going to come to 449.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I said it too quickly, but you need the 53,000 to get to the 449.
So there might be an asterisk missing there? Or else there was a calculation error?
I got 395.
395, 332.
I don't know how I just did it, I don't know, what's it? I'm sorry, I apologize. Yes, we do need, there should be an asterisk next, next to the gasoline. You're absolutely correct.
Or should there be?
No, there should be. Because if you add that in there and add them all up, it comes out to 449,000.
Okay, right, so there should be, if the number we want to give back is 449?
Correct.
So I think the question I'm raising is, should there be? Should that be funds that we don't count in the funds we give back?
And that's, that's a question for the Board, that's...
If, if, do you have a calculator, Mrs. Federico?
Yes, I do.
So if we take the 449,000 and we reduce that by 53,786, what does that come to?
396. So it's still, still higher than the 382,000.
Yeah, I came up with an exact number of 395,214.
Yes.
Mr. Whiskeman?
I believe you mentioned, Mr. Richatelli, that the final numbers will be brought forth in July, that these are the preliminary numbers and...
Correct.
Some final adjustments, either additional positive or perhaps not quite as rosy as this is, will be finalized in July. I think you're expecting maybe just a little bit more, or hoping there'll be a little bit more.
Correct.
What, at what point do we need to make our decision? Can we make a final decision at the July meeting and, and as to how much goes back to the city? Or do we need to make something tonight?
Really, you don't need to do it until July, because we don't close the books. So technically, whatever's left in the account on midnight on June 30th, or midnight on July 1st, it lapses to the city if it's still in the account.
So if we don't make a decision tonight to not give it back, in terms of, say, designating it to certain expenditures, it's going to lapse. Is that what you're saying? Because you've earmarked some of these items for transfers, which will balance. And, and at this point in time, there's 449,000 that's not earmarked for anything else. So unless we designate that, that be earmarked and spent on something specific, you, it will lapse. Is that a correct statement? I'm just trying to understand.
I'm not, I, yeah, I hear what you're saying. I'm just not 100% sure. We don't close the books until the end of July, really.
So I'm just trying to say, do we need to take action tonight?
It would be preferable, to be honest with you. It's, it's, it's the best thing to do. It gives us direction as to what? Because we need to, whatever monies we have available, we need to generate purchase orders before July 1st.
July 30th.
Yes. So it would be helpful for us to know exactly how much money to issue purchase orders for.
Dr. Gregory?
I would suggest that we have the $64,951 of equipment, furniture, and computers that were cut out of next year's budget be purchased with this year's budget, and then leave the rest sitting there for a final determination in July.
Board members, how do you feel about that? I agree. So that would leave, leave us returning less than the 382 of the city?
Maybe.
It would give another...
384,608, I think?
Oh.
You said 64,392?
$64,091.
Oh, I'm sorry.
51.
Oh, sorry, 9.
So it would, yes, that's the number, 384,091.
It would at least cover that. 382.
How, how did you come up with that?
The 64,091.
449 minus 64,951?
Correct.
384,049.
All right. So then we would take no other action, this, the Board would just take no other action on any transfers until July, other than that?
I, I think we have to do the transfers, because otherwise they can't move forward with Building and Grounds and 95,000. I mean, you can't spend that in July, you have to spend it now.
Okay, well, because what I heard Dr. Gregory say was to leave...
I'm okay with that friendly amendment.
Okay. So we need to make an amendment, a formal amendment, please. We need a formal amendment based on saying what you want to do from somebody.
You want me to try?
Can you, can you give me one, one second?
Absolutely.
Because I think I'm going, I think what's going to be the easiest thing for us to do is to recommend to you that we reduce the amount being transferred from, and that come from the instructional freeze number. So we would reduce the instructional freeze number by the 64,091, and then reduce the total of 779, and I'll come up with the number. And then on the backside, we just reduce the, the number going to the city to 384,049.
Would that permit you to purchase equipment, furniture, and computers?
Yes. Yes, it does. It would, it would, it would allow us to do it, and we would come back to you with, you know, the final transfer at the July meeting.
So are you working on some specific numbers there, Mr. Richatelli?
I am. Okay. So, if I could put it into words and see if it captures what, what the Board intends. So, the, the motion would be to approve the transfers as proposed by administration with the following change, changes. Transfer from, in the 6,000 Instructional Supplies Freeze Account, the new number would be 40,518, for a total of transferring from of 714,049. And then on the transfer to side, reduce the amount being returned to the city to 384,049, for a total being transferred to 714,049.
Skryjinski?
Does that mean the 65, 64,951 that is going to be left in the Instructional Supply Account needs to be transferred to a different account to pay for equipment, furniture, and computers?
No, because, because we didn't...
Staying for that.
I'm sorry?
Staying for that, correct?
I just want to make sure it's in the right account.
It's in the right account.
It's the 6,000s.
It's, it's in the right object. 6,000s and 7,000s, we can transfer between the two, because they're in the same, the same categories, budget categories.
Any other questions?
You want to write that down for us?
Yeah. If I can, if I can say it again, and then Suzanne says, so moved.
Like, before you do that, are we good with that?
Yes.
Are we good with that?
So, so the motion would be, move to transfer, move to transfer, or move to make budget transfers as recommended by administration with the following changes. On page one, transfer from, on the line Instructional Supplies Freeze Account, 6,000, the new number to be 40,518, for a total be transferred from of 714,049. And on page two, the transfer to, the line funds to be returned to the city, new number to be 384,049, for a new transfer to number of 714,049. With the understanding that the difference in the recommendation would be used to purchase equipment, furniture, and fixtures that was cut or reduced from the 1718 budget of 64,951. I think I got all that.
That was very good. Can I just say so moved?
Yes.
Okay, so moved. Good job. There's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a...
Mr. Whiskeman?
Question that, this sets all those transfers, but at July 1st, as you close the books, if there's any additional surpluses of any kind, those will lapse, unless some other action is taken?
No, they, they won't. We, we will spend the money, and this is, it's, this is just the way it has to be. We did the same thing on the city side. We have to close the books, so we, we have to place all purchase orders by June 30. So if you haven't placed any restrictions on any other funds, we're going to use all the funds left in the, in the, in the accounts. And then we would come back to you and ask for your retroactive approval. Correct.
I just want to make sure we have a correct understanding, that's all. Thank you.
So, any other discussion on that motion? Seeing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item on the agenda is the dispersion report, Mr. Richatelli?
Thank you, Dr. Fiezer. Yes, the dispersion account is, or the dispersion report is in your package. It reflects all of the purchases that you made in the month of May that are over $1,500, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mrs. Skryjinski?
I have a question. On the top of, I think it's the second page, there was $4,100 for pairs to long jump and runway and track.
Yes.
At Foran. What was that? Because that's been in the budget for next year, it's been in Buildings and Grounds for the summer work.
Correct. It's, there's major repairs that need to be done in all the track and field areas at both schools. That, that work is in the capital improvement plan, because that's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right.
The, we need to do a substantial fix of those, of the high, I don't, I'm not sure if it's the high jump or the long jump, but, but those, those areas, both schools are experiencing major problems. So this summer, we're going to do a major repair on those.
So what was this?
This was just touch-up so that we could have a safe track for this track and field year. If we didn't do these emergency repairs, there would not have been those track and field events at those schools. They, they just would have had to cancel them, and those students wouldn't have been able to participate in their sports at home. So we made the decision to do emergency repairs now, and then to do the, the bigger fix. Fix them correctly with the money that's budgeted in the 1718 budget. Those will be done this summer. And then, if, if those are done, then they won't be part of the big picture once we finally get around to doing all of the track and field work in the capital improvement plan. So there's, there's three levels, there really is three levels of repair here, and it's, one was safety, just to get us through the season this year. Second one was, we're going to rebuild them next year. And then the third is part of the CIP, but as I said, if those are already done, and they're done in satisfaction of, you know, the schools and the athletic directors, then we wouldn't include those in the package for CIP.
Any other questions? Goodness, Skryjinski? All right. Consent agenda, Mr. DeVais, most of the consent agenda?
I make a motion as an ultimate consent, a consent item, consideration of minutes, May 8, 2017, special meeting, May 8. May eighth, two thousand seventeen, special meeting, May eighth, two thousand seventeen, business meeting. May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, committee is holding.
There's second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We had no new business. Board comment? Before we go into executive session. Board comment? Mr. DeGrego?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to make a statement. There might be something wrong on my statement, but I'd like to be corrected. It's small. I was recently invited to Law High School, where I demonstrated techniques to forensic evidence gathering in Miss Mannion's Crime and Violence classes. I'm finding an above avid interest by female students in this field of forensic science. At the Law High School senior awards the other night, I was very impressed to hear that, now here's where I made me a mistake. I don't know, was it the valedictorian or the salutatorian? Because there were so many awards. That female student will be majoring in forensic science. I don't know who that was.
I don't remember.
She's going to UNH.
Who's that?
I think she's going to UNH. Is it the valedictorian?
I thought it was the salutatorian.
This is Tricia Brady? Was it Tricia Brady? Wasn't it Kavitha?
One of those two are going. And I'm happy to see that, because we need more women in that field. Okay.
Any other board comment?
I wanted to say that I continue to be very impressed with the academy graduations. And this year, there were some phenomenal secondary, post-secondary high school colleges that some of those children are going to. University of New Haven, University of Hartford, Southern, a couple of other, you know, just some really top-notch schools. And it's just a phenomenal program over there. They do a wonderful job. Very, it's hard to not cry when you're listening to these teachers talking about these students and the struggles that they've overcome and the successes that they've made. So just kudos to that staff, please.
Absolutely. They did a phenomenal job.
That was beautiful ceremony.
Yes, it was. All right, a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Okay, motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss, one, salaries for the Assistant Superintendent and Chief Operations Officer, and two, a personnel issue. Dr. Pheasor is invited.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Where are we going?
Where should we go, Dr. Pheasor? So let's see, we're back in, are we all here? Back in session, public session at ten eighteen. Mr. DeBais, you have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion. That the Milford Board of Education increase the salary of Mr. Richatelli by two point three percent and Mr. Burt by two point five percent, effective July first, two thousand and seventeen.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? Casey, seeing none?
Would it be appropriate to at least give an explanation so that people don't think that one is not measuring up?
Would you like to give that explanation?
Sure. So in considering all the factors in front of us, we looked at the, we considered the timing of when both individuals came into the district and the level of experience they had and the rates that they came in at. And we felt that Mr. Burt, having come in with less experience, it was appropriate to give a higher percentage in terms of catching up in terms of the timing and the level of experience.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else anyone would like to add?
I feel that it should be even. So if you're going to make one two point, was it five? You should make the other two point five. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. No.
Any opposed?
No.
No. All right, so we're going to do a roll call. I'm going to just go down the way. Claire Casey?
Yes.
Mike DeGrego?
No.
Walter Hagadorn?
Yes.
Dr. Gregory?
Yes.
Ms. DeBais?
No.
Ms. Federico?
Yes.
Mr. Skryczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Skryczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Whiskeman?
Yes.
And me. Okay, so that's...
Should I have to say yours out loud?
I said me, yes. No, I said me, no, I think I did say it out loud. Seven, yes, three, no, so motion passes. Seven to three. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?